Okay, it's 5:30, so we're gonna call the meeting to order for, let me see what month it is, September. And the first item up is pledge of allegiance and Mr. Butch Oliver's gonna read this.
You would please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Our mission statement tonight will be read by Mr. Mike Isbell.
Beaufort County Schools will provide quality educational programs and services to ensure student academic and vocational success.
Thanks, Mike. Understand, no public comment?
Right.
Okay, so that'll carry us to the approval of the agenda. There were a couple of last-minute changes, but if you've just logged in, you should have everything up to date. Anything else need to be changed on or added?
That's good. A little approval.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. We have an agenda, and that'll carry us into our public recognition and...
Minutes.
Oh, minutes, you're right. Got a bunch of minutes, don't I? How many we got here? Approve, yep, September the 8th, they are on here. Hope you've had time to look over those.
Second.
Okay. Any questions about it? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye to approve minutes. Okay, minutes approved. Now we can move to the public recognition. And tonight Carolyn Walker will be assisting Nicole Spencer, and I believe Don wants to have a word to say.
Yeah, we're doing something a little different. We're gonna have monthly sponsors for character education. We're not doing the sign the carts type thing. We did that for a few years, and we're doing something different with partners in our community. And I just wanted to read the names, and we'll recognize each one of these each month as their month comes up. But Raised in a Barn Farm, Cinema 7 from Washington, Texas Roadhouse, Fish Hooks, East Coast Wings, Frank's Pizza, Extreme Action Park Scoops down on Main Street, and Pizza Inn have all agreed to be corporate sponsors for the each month, and we'll give that recognition when we get to that point. But wanted to make sure that we gave them the proper recognition here for agreeing to do that. And then we'll move forward.
The character traits that were recognized in our schools for the month of September were respect and responsibility. The nominees at the elementary level were from Bath Elementary, Wayne Glancy; from Chalkwood Middle, Hardy Corey; from Chalkwood Primary, Javon McCall; from Eastern Elementary, Byron Ranero; from John Cotton Taylor, Amy Hodges; from John Small, Ja'Kai Bryant; and from SW Snowden, Brianna Pickett. And the winner at the elementary level was Wayne Glancy from Bath Elementary, if he will come forward.
Wayne.
Wayne.
Stay right here.
He's gonna come around.
Camera can get a full shot of you.
Wayne is a kindergartner at Bath Elementary. His parents are Erin Woolard and Zachary Glancy, if they will stand. And he was presented by his teacher and his guidance counselor, Ms. Jessica Boehner and Ms. Sarah Ross, if they will stand as well. All right, and they wrote, Wayne is a kindergarten student at Bath Elementary. He is very respectful to his teachers and always says yes ma'am and no ma'am. Wayne is also very, very responsible. Wayne has a medical medication and wears a monitor each day. When it beeps to signal his blood sugar is low, he immediately shows it to his teacher so she can help him. Each morning, he reports what he ate for breakfast in the cafeteria to his teacher or school counselor so that his carbohydrate level can be calculated and recorded. Each day before he eats lunch or snack, Wayne uses his medical supplies to prick his finger and check his blood sugar. He sits patiently and respectfully while he is given his medication. Wayne is sweet, kind, bright, and responsible, and we are so glad he's a student at Bath Elementary. We say congratulations to Wayne.
And we've got a certificate here for you, but we also have a bag with some goodies in it. Gift certificate on the front, but I'm gonna let you, before I give this to you, I want you to walk around and you're gonna shake the hands of the board members. Can you do that, boys?
Good job, Wayne. Congratulations, buddy. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations, keep up the good work.
Congratulations, buddy.
Right up here, Wayne.
Yeah, wouldn't want to leave him out.
Thank you so much for doing all that you're doing down there at Bath Elementary. We're gonna call you back up for a picture in just a minute, okay? You can have a seat for right now, Tim.
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Chalkwood Middle, Roman Butler; from Northeast Elementary, Austin Tate; from PS Jones, Nicholas Pennell; and from SW Snowden, Corey Jones. And the winner at the middle school level was Austin Tate from Northeast Elementary. He will come forward.
Congratulations.
Austin is a seventh grader in Northeast Elementary. His mother is Ms. Crystal Tate, if she will stand. And he was presented by his teacher, Ms. Paula Ruark Williams, at Northeast Elementary. Ms. Paula Ruark Williams said the following about Austin Tate. "The beginning of school can be extremely hectic and overwhelming. In addition to learning new faces, there is a good deal of paperwork that has to be completed. Austin, very politely, came up to me and said that he did not have one of the forms that I would be checking the next day. He came back and reminded me, and I thought I had all the necessary forms to him before he left from school. The next morning, Austin and his mom were at my door. She said he wanted to make sure he had everything completed that I had requested. I feel that this demonstrated both respect in the way he approached me and responsibility that he brought his mom to make sure he had everything that had been requested. We say congratulations to Austin."
Austin, we might have a lot more students just like you. I'm gonna give, when I give it to you, if you would go through and shake the hands of the board members.
Excuse me. Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we're gonna call you back up and have a picture. Congratulations on this, and that you're doing such a great job.
At the high school level, the nominees were Ashley Danielle Woolard from Northside High School; from Washington High School, Jalen Brake; and from Southside High School, Sarah Selby. And the winner was Ashley Danielle Woolard from Northside High School, if she will come forward. Ashley is a 12th grader at Northside High School, and her parents are James and Vivian Woolard, if they will stand. And she was presented by her teacher, Ms. Jennifer Bun, if she will stand as well. And Ms. Bun wrote, I nominate Ashley Danielle Woolard for September's character trait of responsibility and respect. Danielle is one of four Northside students who will be graduating from high school this year with an associate's in arts degree from Beaufort Community College. Mr. Clark has named these students the Fab Four, and it is truly fitting. They will have earned this advanced degree along with graduating from high school all within four years. They are all wonderful students, but Danielle's demonstration of responsibility and respect really stands out to me. She was a member of my multimedia and webpage design class in the spring. Her Northside High School schedule conflicted with her BCC classes. She would have come into my, she would have to come into my class 30 to 45 minutes late in order to finish her classes at BCC and make the drive. We agreed on this adjusted schedule. The kicker was that my class uses Adobe software that most of us can't afford to have at home, so she needed enough time at school to complete all of her assignments. In addition, Danielle chose to take my class at an honors level, which requires five more rigorous projects of research, production, and presentation. Daily, she would quietly come in well after class had begun. She managed to catch up work each day and didn't interrupt my lesson delivery. She sometimes would skip her lunch to stay in my room to work. She showed so much respect in the way she would approach me regarding my lunch period. She was very cognizant of my personal time. It is so easy to go the extra mile for a student who is so respectful and showing so much responsibility in pulling this extra class load. Her project production was phenomenal. No one would ever guess that she had 30 minutes less time in class daily. The final icing on this cake was, at exam time, she scored the highest in my class on the state post assessment. It is clear that this student has shown extreme personal responsibility and respect for herself and others. We say congratulations.
Ashley, what a fantastic job you have done, and thank you for making the Beaufort County Schools so proud. We look forward to you coming back one day and getting this all straight. If you want to go through and shake the board's hands, and then we'll get a picture.
Congratulations, Ashley. Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And there's a move for him to flash drive, and in all the vouchers, there's a gift certificate in front. If you want to get a picture.
You want me to sign this?
No, you can hold on to it.
I'll turn it on.
Yeah, good. Get it. Back, stay right there. Good.
Let him go first. Smile. Whatever, teacher.
That's it? Did you choose? Yeah, I can't, well, I can read it.
As I mentioned earlier, we've got sponsors each month, and I'd like to say congratulations. Your character education gift certificate tonight comes from Raised in a Barn Farm, and it includes free passes to the barn farm maze for 2016. Let's give Raised in a Barn a round of applause for this. And for those who have watched or aware of how we normally do our meetings, we normally do a custodial school recognition for Clean School Award. We're gonna start doing that on a quarterly basis, so we're not doing that tonight, but you will see that in a couple of months to come.
Any other recognition? If not, we would like to thank you for being here and helping us celebrate these fine students. It's well-deserving, and it's definitely the favorite portion of the meeting for us.
Yes.
And, but now we're gonna move into the business portion of the meeting, and you're welcome to stay. But we will take a brief moment to, if you just came for the recognition portion, to leave.
But as I said, you're welcome to stay. You may find it really enlightening. I don't know.
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Yeah, this is usually when the room clears out on this night.
Thank you all for coming.
We know our place.
Thank you.
No, thank you, congratulations. Thank you.
Y'all go celebrate.
That's right.
See, Kelly, that's how important they just zip right. They zip right on out.
Ask Don a question.
Not a reflection on what you're about to say.
Now, Kelly, you realize since you've stayed past that, them leaving, you've got to save the rest of the meeting.
You missed your window.
Well, then, we'll move through as quickly as we can for Butch and others.
No action portion of the meeting, and the first item is election assistant recruiting guide, and it does have Ms. Kelly Hopkins, but who's gonna actually?
Right up here.
Sure, right up here. I believe there's something she wants to explain to us.
Yeah, Kelly and I have talked about some opportunities for our students to get involved in the election process, and of course, we're not looking at anything pushing a party or candidate or anything like that. We want students to be engaged and recognize that civic opportunity and responsibility. But part of this is a program that's called Student Election Assistant Recruiting Guide that you're gonna see, but also a voter registration drive that we wanna make sure we take care of of our students in high school. Kelly's here tonight just to share this with you, and then with your, with no action, we don't think there'll be any issue with it. We're gonna move forward, but wanted you to be aware of it so you know what was going on.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Phipps for meeting with me, and this year's gonna be a big year in our office. It's a big year for some of y'all, and with the media surge, it's a good year for us to kinda take that wave and take it into the schools because truly, these kids need to learn about the election process as soon as they can. And so we're thinking about ways of reaching out to the kids, and Dr. Phipps has met with me, and we've talked about a few different things that we can do some outreach with. One of those is the student election assistance. In 2003, the North Carolina Legislature enacted a program where 17-year-olds can actually work the polls on Election Day. We train them. They'd have to come to a class for a couple hours. We usually do one at night, and then they would work on Election Day. They have to be at the polls at 6 o'clock, and then they would leave at 9:30, 10 o'clock. But they are also paid for that. They will, they'll receive $150 for working the polls on Election Day as an assistant. And knowing that our turnout is gonna be so high this year, we're really looking forward to having these kids in the precincts to help with our computers because they know a lot more about computers than a lot of our older folks do. So it's gonna help us out, plus it helps them out. It's good on their college application. I would be happy to write a letter of recommendation for any of them that come in. We have used them a few times before through a few private schools, but we've never made a real push for the public schools to use them, and this year we would like to do that. So we've met with, or I've met with Dr. Phipps, and we've talked about that, and I believe we're gonna talk about it with the principals on Thursday and kinda get this out and figure out a way to get it to the kids and see if we can't get some of these young folks involved in the process early on. I'm excited about it. We've also talked about voter registration drives. If these seniors are turning 18 and before the election or on Election Day, they can register to vote, and I do know that everybody's talking to everybody about voter registration drives, and Dr. Phipps and I both agree that the best thing is for us to work directly together and not have a third party involved in it. And him and I sit down and get these registration forms out to these 17-year or 18-year-olds within the school system, and we're gonna work through that prior to the election. And another thing that I've offered, although we haven't discussed it in great detail, and I'm probably gonna leave it up to the principals or any classrooms that would like it, the Board of Elections would be happy to try and set up some mock elections. I think it would be cool if we could do maybe the president and the governor and do it the week before, and we'd supply the ballot so that we know there are cost issues with that and working with the SGA or the Student Government Associations and seeing how these schools can kinda predict. I think it would be cool. That's not been worked out completely, but that's a couple of the things that we're thinking about doing this fall and pushing through this presidential election. So, Dr. Phipps, was there anything else you wanted me to kinda, or if y'all had any questions?
We're required in one of the policies on the academic side that we updated recently, there's a civics requirement that we work with civics teachers in high school to make sure that we're covering the voter registration piece. So this would be what we're doing, and we'll fold in all of the teachers and the administrators, anybody else that wants to be involved. But we'll have some conversation with our principals on Thursday, and then hopefully before we meet again, we'll have all the pieces in place, ready to set things up.
And like the mock election, that might not happen. It might be something we're pushing too hard for, but we'll see. We're gonna at least do the student election assistance and the voter registration drives, and then we'll go from there and see if we can fit that in.
Sounds like me, yeah.
I think it's great.
How would do them missing a day, could that be handled as an excuse?
I'll talk with him about, yeah, I think it's community service, and there's an educational piece to it, and there's the training part that goes on, so we'll work with principals to make sure that anything they miss is made up, but we don't count that as a day.
Do you have a cap on how many you can accept?
Well, we're looking at probably two per precinct. We've got 21 precincts. We're gonna try to put them in their precinct or somewhere near so they don't have to get up so early and get to these places. The Board and I have discussed if we have an influx of a lot of folks, we'll probably draw by lot. And say around Washington, we have a whole lot. I don't know if we'll decide to send them to Bell Haven early in the morning if we don't have anybody in Bell Haven, or just do them as, I think we'll probably look at precincts. We'd like to have them in their precincts.
Okay. And will these, and I know it's a little ways off, but will these forms for them to fill out be in their guidance department, or?
We're gonna discuss how we're gonna roll that out.
But it'd be open to anybody that wants to apply?
Yes.
And then if you have, okay.
I mean, it's not just open to public schools. It's also, private schools and home schools could do this under the program. It's just we're pushing this year to get involved with the public schools, and not that we would disinclude the private schools, but just I could get two more students through the public school system this year.
Sounds great.
I think you'll get a good response. I'm sure you will.
We actually had a newspaper article on it last week. I think they did a little preview, and we've had two people turn in. They sought out the forms online themselves, got, and they had to get the principal's signature, their parent's signature, and they had to have a certain grade point average, I think, or they have, I think, set it out. It's just saying that they're doing well in school. So they've already sought out to do. One was from Montessori, and one is from Washington High School, we've already received.
Good deal.
Thank you.
So if you know of any 17-year-olds like down in Aurora?
I will.
Get them to come see us.
I will. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
I'm headed to the game.
Thanks for doing this stuff.
Get somebody to send me updates.
All right, I'll text you. Y'all have a good one.
We can excuse him here a little.
Okay, policy updates? Been doing a lot of this lately.
We are. There are not as many in this particular round of updates, but this is our first reading, so we have these presented for you in a PDF, but also the explanation that normally accompanies that. And I'm not gonna go through these in detail. I'd like you to have a chance to look at them, and then before, on the night that we do approval, I'll go through them, but there are only four. There are some legal authorities involved with session law and the general statutes, but then there's a description of the update and notes like we normally have. So if you'll take some time to look at it, it's only four pages to cover everything here. We'll come back at another meeting for approval.
But nothing that stands out big, big.
I read through these briefly, and I noticed most of it's dealing with construction and contracts, but, and we have previously set some limits. Do these numbers match the limits we've set previously, or we had to go back and change that, or is this changing that?
No, we, a lot of the policies pieces that we get from the state board, from the school board are customized at the state level, and then we customize it for our particular needs. So if there are any dollar figures in there that we need to look at, we'll look at that again before we bring them for the second time to make sure. But I see 5,000 there, which is what we've done on Part B on the bottom of page one, so I think they should be consistent.
Okay.
But there's always a possibility that something slips through, and that's why we want them to sit for two months to, or two readings to have a chance to pick up anything like that. Yeah, we're not changing any of that.
Yeah, I'd look through them. It looked to me like they had picked up on everything, but everybody's got plenty of time to look over them and see, so. Okay, so that gives us time to look over that. Let's move into the discussion action, and Stan Hudson, you're up with a capital budget update. And you've got two attached. Just tell me which one you want us to pull up. Well, you got a capital update and a worksheet. I had, I'll pull up the first.
My worksheet.
Okay, well, I didn't bring, I thought we were using yours, I'm sorry. Okay.
Just pull up the update.
Yes, ma'am, update 1516 in progress.
Got you.
Eastern Elementary, pod 1 through 3 enclosure. Electrical switchover was completed on Saturday, the 10th, with no problems. They are currently installing the overhead lights and electrical outlets. HVAC systems, HVACC systems have been completed. They plan to complete the grading of the courtyard by the 20th, and they did. They finished it yesterday. This was written earlier, so. They have finished the rest of the flashing that has been completed also, and they did paint the interior on the 17th, the interior side of the hallway ceiling. That's been done. The windows and the handrails are expected to be delivered and installed on the week of September 26.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Since they finished that grading yesterday, how did it hold up?
It looked good. I actually went over there at lunchtime today, and they, I didn't walk around the back of the building where it went around, but there was some sand on the sidewalk. We need to pour some spouts, there's some pads outside of their contract, but actually the inside of the courtyard looked very nice.
I mean, does anybody know if it vacated all that water in a?
Oh, yes, there was no water standing. I went over there this morning after the rain, the big rain we had today, so, and there was no erosion of the new soil and straw they put down, so that didn't wash away.
Stand on top of that, do we do an assessment on all of the schools after a big rain like this?
Yes, sir, we're getting calls regularly, and we're having to go out and look to see what it is, so. When we have these four-inch rains.
You'd need good time to do that.
Yeah, and we have those four-inch rains in four minutes, five minutes, goalie washers. See my attached, and I didn't bring it, I'm sorry, I thought we were using a new one. We're gonna go over it later, not, later time, the capital update 1516. There's only four projects, I can probably do it, but I.
Yeah, we. There was my attached.
There's only, the transportation canopy, install the canopy of the bus garage, that cannot be done due to the wind uplifts and the height of the canopy, so that project can be put back into fund. Eastern Elementary, install the walkover, I'm getting ready to talk about a walkway underneath that canopy, that'll be done afterwards. Eastern Elementary student drive, that come in over budget, so that'd be the one we have to look at later to see if y'all want to fund it tough enough to put it in there. John Cotton Taylor front canopy, it came in over budget, of course, and that'd be the same thing, see if we want to fund it in the future. Chalkwood Primary, installing the awning over, that's been done. P O's been issued, and just waiting on Mr. Walker to get caught up with his work behind him, see if he can get us on the next schedule. Northside High School, that one was, of course, tableled due to the width and everything else, and we came greatly under the budget on what was eight-foot walk, but we decided that we may need to go wider. Chalkwood Middle School, install washable ceilings, we sent that out twice. The first time it came in way, way over budget, and then the second time, we had no one to reply. Snowden building, two rooms, classrooms, grid replacement, we've had no one to reply to RFP. Snowden drainage behind the school, we have purchased the materials for that. We have it in house and planned operations, we'll be doing it.
When will that be done, Stan?
Just so we can get it in there now, it's so wet. We went to let it dry out just a little bit to get in there. We went in there last week with shuttles and relieved some of the standing water, me and Gary Buck did.
The only other existing project that I recall were the bard units, which have been delivered, but we haven't put them in yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they were waiting on the finish-up with Eastern. And they're gonna continue the pads, the concrete pads, system-wide, that'll be some that's done at Northeast, definitely be done there. We added these sidewalks, and now we have the overflow drains dumping into sand, it's washing up, so. Any other questions?
What is that cleaning, paint the ceiling of the?
That was the gymnasium, Washington High School, it came in severely over budget.
Yeah, so what's, is the 2,100 cleaning it?
There's nothing sitting there.
Yeah, it's been cost 21.
Was the plug it washed?
Yeah, I said that must just involve the cleaning.
Originally, it had, it was listed as paint, and we thought it was the paint money, and it was set aside for Washington High School with mislabel, so we thought it was capital fund paint, and we purchased paint system-wide, so it was.
Okay, got you.
And Lynn goes, got us right on that. Any other questions?
And I'm assuming the next one just shows how much he, Russ has spent for cameras and stuff like that, so he's still got some budget carryover there. I don't need to know about the rest.
And then the Eastern Elementary project, of course, is building on, so.
Just, okay, just at some point in time, we're gonna need to. Well, I tell you what, let's just wait till we get through all the 1516 stuff, see what we have left over as far as our fund balance. Just, let's see where we're at. I know we're in the process of doing it, right, Don? So it's no need to even talk some of this stuff because I don't know what the figures are. And I mean, I'm not asking you, because you don't know either, I know it. So as soon as they give us those numbers, then we'll be able to have a conversation about it. That's good.
The only other piece was what was mentioned on the other sheet about the safety and the, not enclosures, but storefronts, I'm gonna call it, for some of the schools. You still shooting for November on that? I saw that's what it said.
Yes, sir. We started today. We met with one of the local contractors today to look at the projects at PS Jones and John Small, and we're starting, we're adding right to RFP, of course, and sending it out because we're gonna include it in all, but we're trying to get us the material that's what we need.
Because then we say we had, there'll be several of the schools that we'll be able to do as candidates, the same format.
That's exactly right. We can get those under one RFP together and let one contractor do it, so they'll all be alike, and we won't have seven different kinds.
It's gonna be better for you two.
You still shooting for November on that? I saw that's what it said.
Yes, sir. We started today. We met with one of the local contractors today to look at the projects at P S Jones and John Small and we're starting, we're adding right to RFP, of course, and sending it out because we're going to include it in all, but we're trying to get us the material this is what we need.
Because then we say we had, there'll be several of the schools that we'll be able to do as candidates, the same format.
That's exactly right. We can get those under one RFP together and let one contractor do it, so they'll all be alike and we won't have seven different kinds.
It's gonna be better for you too.
Yes, in the future, yes. So we expect what we, the type of product that we have everywhere, and that's traditionally what we do.
I just want to make.
For the same type of door closures and openers and. In addition, it'll be a little different because we're going to have magnetic retract to work with part of the entryway of the school. So it'll be a little different hardware than we've had in the past.
Okay, we'll be good on that then. Any other questions for Stan? If not, you have one other thing to ask.
I'd like to request twenty-five hundred dollars to cover the cost of materials to build a wooden walkway and handrails leading from the new concrete pad over to the EC modular Eastern Elementary. This will make it much easier for our special needs students to have access to modular unit. This will also eliminate the possibility of someone slipping, tripping or falling. The current landing, of the concrete landing in the deck of the trailer, there's just a light grade, but it will meet ADA compliant by putting it in. And then once that in, then Mr. Tendrick will come in and put his awning over it, which he said it wouldn't affect it by moving it over a few inches. It's still the same distance out, so.
So he'll just wait for you to complete the cell work, because we already got his purchase order.
Yes, sir. It's already done. Yes.
I mean, completed work. It's not work, but.
It's in progress.
That'll come out of fifteen, sixteen capital?
I mean, that's where we'd had to go to fund balance on it and I'm sure we got.
And we can cover under maintenance for a little while, but we definitely need some help back in the future. Don't get the budget so straight, so.
Well, no, last check, we had more than that in.
That'll roll forward.
Yeah, that won't work.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I got a motion to second on twenty-five hundred. Any last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to it?
Thank y'all.
Okay, beginning teacher support program. I believe Mr. Don's.
Yes, sir.
Want to explain something to us?
Just, this is the annual request for the board to approve the Beaufort County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan. Each year, we are required by state school board policy to codify what we do with our beginning teachers and our mentors and then have your approval. We've made some changes, just in some language, the licensure terms have changed from standard professional one and two back to initial and continuing, which is what we used to call them about five or six years ago. We still continue to work with our teachers in their first three years. We still assign a mentor for those folks. We still have a beginning teacher induction during the summer. We try to, those folks who we hire, they're brand new. We bring them in for three days in the summer to work ahead of time before school starts to kind of give them an orientation to get started. And then we work with folks, once we hire them, if you hire them in the middle of the year, we do an abbreviated version of that. We work with our beginning teachers and our mentors on their professional development plans where they outline their goals for the year. Our principals are instructed on how to observe them specifically because they're beginning teachers, because they get a few more observations than our veteran teachers do. And in addition, we, we talk about our optimum working conditions for beginning teachers. I mean, these are the ideal. Sometimes we don't always meet those ideals, but we try to work with our principals to make sure we don't burn out our folks very quickly. Major change to mentors this year, the General Assembly passed a law that we're now following that in order to be a mentor in addition to obviously volunteering and wanting to give up your time for very little money or no money at all to work with our beginning teachers, you must also have received a rating of accomplished on your most recent evaluations and demonstrated that you've increased student growth by some testing measure. So that, that's just been a new wrinkle that our folks have had to go through this year to make sure that we're, everyone who is a mentor meets those qualifications. So we recently just got a phone call about our five-year beginning teacher support plan. We're monitored on a rotating basis. We were very successful with our monitoring visit. No issues, no concerns. Basically, just to keep on doing what you're doing, kind of message from the state. And so I would just request that the board would approve this plan and as part of our requirements.
The major, major changes?
Is this beginning teachers straight out of school or is this beginning teachers in Beaufort County?
This, these are, these are anyone in their first three years of their career out of straight, normally straight out of school or lateral entry teachers. If you're new to Beaufort County, but you've got years of experience, then we have a smaller program. For example, we don't have but mentor teachers. We have buddy teachers. They don't complete paperwork, but they try to help you learn the ins and outs of Beaufort County. But you don't spend as much time or have as many required events simply because they've got experience. This is specifically really for those folks in their first three years of teaching, period.
And something we need to do.
Sure, absolutely.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion to second. Any last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. School Board Action Center?
Something we've talked about a couple of years. This past year, we did make a contribution to this activity with the North Carolina School Boards Association. It is an advocacy project. They don't get involved in endorsing candidates or we're taking those kinds of stands, but they do advocacy work on behalf of the school boards across the state. And before we submitted or remitted payment or contribution this year, I wanted to come to you all and find out if you wanted to continue to do it again and seek that decision or not, and we'll work, move appropriately based on your guidance.
And we just stay at the same three thousand dollars?
Do you think it's beneficial?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it, as long as we stay at the same level. Hear a motion from the board.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any questions for Don? I think everybody's aware of what this is. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to that? Thanks. Field trips. And we have three up there.
We've got to do six point four.
Well, I'm gonna skip something else, he says. Well, I'm sure six point four is field trips. We made a change. Yeah, no, we actually moved that one down. We didn't get you to F five. Field trips is now.
Let me try to catch up with the system.
Sorry about that, Don. Threw you a curve there. We made that change only agenda before the meeting. That's why we didn't approve it during the meeting. So P S Jones, Washington and Northside.
We have three that are there and one I wanted to draw your attention to. It's actually a combination. I'm asking that as you approve it tonight. We're doing it for others that come up as well. There are three there as, as Chairman has said. First one is March the twenty-second through twenty-fifth. It's an overnight with P S Jones, FBLA to Greensboro. This is the FBLA conference and they have the appropriate number of chaperones, adult chaperones to go with the students. The second is a national FFA convention and this has Washington listed, but Northside and Southside will be joining them. So what I would ask is that we approve this trip tonight and that we also approve Washington, all three of our traditional high schools attending. It will be out of state overnight at Indianapolis. This is a great opportunity for those students. And there'll be, there'll be more students and adult chaperones that come along, so that'll take care of the requirements that we have for the students and the gender and the appropriate number of adults. And then finally, on November the tenth and eleventh for Northside would be overnight and out of state to Washington DC. Science Club visiting various science museums. And again, follow, use a charter bus with the appropriate number of chaperones. And we'd just like to ask permission for approval on all three of those. Again, with the understanding that we would add Northside and Southside to that Washington FFA trip when they submit that paperwork.
Gotcha.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second to approve the field trips. Any questions? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? School Board Awards Program and delegate, delegate appointment.
Couple of things we need to do here. Number one, we need to know who will be attending the North Carolina School Board Association's annual convention conference in November in Greensboro. And we have four slots, four delegates and an alternate. If folks want to do that, we need, we need the names of that group tonight. And if folks are going and will be willing to serve, I've got the form we can fill out. You all can make that motion and approve it and we can take care of that first. And then I can talk about the awards if that's okay.
I'm gonna nominate Michael Billbroebe my proxy.
I guess I am now.
We're being a delegate.
It's a hard job, hard job.
I'm going and I will be a delegate.
If you have a spot out, is Ms. Booth going?
Oh, yeah.
I'm definitely going.
He knows I'll take care of it.
Take care of it.
Look at him. I mean, I don't mind doing it, but if somebody else.
Who's going? I'm gonna see if we have a fourth one and if they want to be a delegate.
Lisa, don't shoot me. I, my, my, my plan might change by tomorrow, so. Right now on paper, I'm going, but that's why he's gonna be my proxy.
The other is, there's a series of awards that they give at that conference, at one of the luncheons, and they're listed there. Other than the, we've listed the ones that were available to participate in. And didn't know if anybody tonight wants to make a recommendation. It has to actually be submitted on the day of our next board meeting and it requires formal board action, so we can do that at the last minute when we meet. Or if you have some recommendations tonight, I'll have some time between now and then to get the paperwork taken care of and submitted.
I didn't catch. Which one you talking about?
Any of these.
This is where I can say something?
Sure.
For the Raleigh Dingler Award, I would like for the board to consider Ms. Alpha Booth.
I agree with that.
If Don would agree to write the.
I'd be happy to.
Recommendation.
He's got a creative mind. He can do it.
Well, I, I don't want to get into that because I know he can do it better than I can, but I absolutely want to recommend that to the board.
Can I give you a second? She just said I give you a third.
But now, anybody else can speak up if they have something else.
She'll okay.
Well, this is one time Chairman's gonna say, everybody but you can't.
No, she is representing this board real. She needs to be recognized.
Yep, all I, yeah, I wasn't making a motion. I was making a recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
Somebody will make a motion to that.
I second and again, then.
Okay, I have a motion in several seconds. I don't even think I'm gonna give you a chance to have anything to say because I'm afraid Ms. Booth will try to back me up. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed to this? Thank you very much. And Don, you will do the honors?
I'll take care of that.
He'll take care of the.
The other I'd like to ask you to take a look at is the award for excellence in architectural design. I'm not sure that it made it on that list. It's one of the awards that's listed, but given the work MHA did with us at Eastern Elementary and with, from the focus of trying to get a big project done on a budget, I'd really love to showcase what they did. And it allows them to get their name out, allows other folks that may be working on a budget to see what happened in rural eastern North Carolina of actually making something come to fruition. So with your permission, I'd like to do that on our multipurpose room in Mid Eastern.
That's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. Want to the board?
Great. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Got a motion to second for that. Now, you're gonna handle all of that too? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to that? Okay, thank you.
Any of the others, if there's anything else you see there and the name, you know, you feel compelled to have me do that, I'll be glad to do it and we'll take care of it when we meet next time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I would just, I would like to nominate Terry for the School Board Member Leadership Award. Well, I'm gonna tell you like we tell Ms. Booth, you don't get to say so.
I agree.
I'm making that motion.
And I second it.
Ms. Booth, hold your hand.
All right, go ahead. That's what, go ahead and vote. Carolyn, let's vote.
Oh, all those in favor? Those opposed? Keep your mouth quiet.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I, while we're giving out all these accolades and all these awards applications, I would, I would like for us to look at recognizing our county commissioners. We have, we have come a long way.
We're actually talking, aren't we?
We are actually talking and they're actually listening and we're listening to them and we are trying our best to work with them. We've come a long way. Now, we're not perfect by no means, but we need to recognize them for what they're doing.
I agree, I mean.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
And I'll second that.
And that is, as I understand that, that's the board as a whole.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I have no problem with that since we have a motion to second. It doesn't matter if I have a problem or not. I didn't make it, but. County Commissioners of the Year, he's.
I want us to fill out the application, award, award application to recognize our county commissioners for their support to this Beaufort County Board of Education.
And I second that once again. We have two beautiful buildings. Thanks.
We gotta take a vote on it first. Do you understand it now, Mike? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to second to recommend or recognize the Beaufort County's commissioners. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Sam, like you got your hands full here, Don. But you did volunteer on the first one, so that could you set, set you up for all.
He knows he's gonna do a ball.
Once you volunteer, Mac, you know how it works. I'll give a list of something. No, I just said that we'll let him work. Okay.
I'll make sure you write up Terry's script that you do a good one, because I probably will be the one that do that all state.
Just seriously.
I don't want to have to add anything.
Just move on, just move on. I told you, Don, earlier tonight, did I not tell you? I said this board is something else. Okay, let's move on out of here. Let's go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight dot eleven. A one to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one one five C dash three twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion to second to go in closed session. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. We're in closed session. Okay, we're back in open session and the first order of business is, I gotta look at this good because mine has changed. Approval of the personnel agenda of which we just discussed.
No movement, Mr. Chair.
Second. Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, personnel agenda is approved. And Don, you need to explain a financial services contract briefly to us.
What I'd like to ask you to consider is the School Efficiency Consultants. These are three very well thought of individuals from across the state who were school finance directors, have made a career in that area. I met with them today in light of our recent resignation of Lynn Harold and also Beth Lowe's gonna be retiring. So we need to make sure that we've got a bridge in place, not only to get through that time, but we have some work to do in terms of an upcoming audit and also getting the budget worked out and then just the mentoring role, reconciliation work that needs to be done and all of that. I feel like we can trust these individuals, given the lapse salary that we'll have, we can certainly pay for the services. And as the contract states, it would extend no later than the fifteenth of November. And then if we wanted something else from them at some point beyond that, we'd, I'd come back to you. But we'd like to ask for permission to go ahead and execute this and get the arrangement started with them and they'll start as early as next week.
And that's what we discussed a few minutes ago. Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
No movement, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed to that? Okay, got it, Lisa? Calendar updates for October or calendar for October in general?
Two meeting dates. Our work session is on October the fourth at four o'clock and our board meeting is on the eighteenth at five thirty.
When is the coming?
Is the work session five o'clock or four o'clock? Five o'clock.
Yeah, the fourth at five o'clock. And.
The eighteenth.
The eighteen.
At five thirty.
And at five thirty. Just so you, I mean, not asking you to change it, just saying I probably won't be here, but I'm sure Ms. Walker can do a fine job.
We had said several months ago that we wanted the schools to come in a month early to do school improvement plans because we've got accreditation going on. But because we're moving to a new system and working with Advanced Dad, we're gonna continue to do that in November. So we, we'll send some prospective dates out, see if that'll work for you. We'd like to get it done in one night.
Okay, but the thing with the principals, we discussed, you'll try it for the next meeting.
The fourth.
Because if, if it possible, yeah, because I don't want to miss it on the eighteenth. Board member updates?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna try to be just as brief as I can be because my heart is heavy. And it's heavy because I'm leaving, I'm leaving the Board of Directors for the NSBA. But, and leaving, I want to say to this board that I do greatly appreciate you granting me the opportunity to serve and to represent you and that organization. Very good organization, very informative. I learned a lot and I held you high. Wherever we went, I held you high because I knew that we had a good board down here in Beaufort County. But saying all of that, I hate it, but nevertheless, I do have a little bit of information to give you. Okay, I want to let you know that, and Dr. Phipps, you might know this already, but I want to kind of share it with the board that the Lieutenant Governor is pushing the bill for the low performing schools. They're asking, he's tried his best to get those schools into the ASD, which is the Achievement School District. And that's really not what we need for our children. And we're trying to fight it hard because what happens is that when that school, when they do, if that comes to pass, if that passes, what's gonna happen? That means that they'll take all of the staff from that school. They'll put it into those schools and those kids will only be able to have only fifteen students in every class. And it's not good. It's not really good. Plus the fact that when that is, is over, they would have to carry that for five to eight years. And if, when that's over, if they, if, let's just say we have a school that's in that and when it comes back to us, if we decide we don't want that school anymore, we don't have to have it. So that's not good. And I want you to, to really be thinking about that. What, what can we do to offer our support to the NSBA, the NSBA for, that they're, they're sending a letter. At this point, they are sending a letter to the governor concerning the opposing of that bill. So we want you to know that. I will be meeting with them again. that bill. So, we want you to know that. I will be meeting with them again on, in November when we go to the general. But that's just, just to say what, what, what we have to say for the ending of this year. So, again, thank you all. I've enjoyed it, and if I had to go again, I would go. But it's a rotating board, and we're finished. So, thank you so much.
And you sure we can't reappoint you under a different name?
I wish I could. I really wish I could. But thank you anyway.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you've done, keeping our name in before, and we don't wanna get lost down here in a little Beaufort County.
No.
Any others?
I have to write a note. I'll just write the note.
There you go. Okay, super junior updates?
We are working on a facility use policy. Kim's updating that. We've gone back through and tried to compare what our fees and rates are. We're gonna bring that to you in October and ask you to take a look at it. One of the things says that I have to bring that to you each year. We've not really addressed it in the last year or two, actually since Patrick Avila left. So, we're working on that. We'll have that to you. Also, working closely with DPI and the state on the fuel situation, and it appears that some, some ground was made today in terms of the bypass being put together. It's gonna take a while to get fuel all the way where it needs to go and then delivered where it needs to go. But we've got at least fifteen days of diesel fuel in place here, so we're in good shape as far as that goes. We may have to curtail personal vehicle and car travel at some point in time, but we're hoping that we, we have some word by the end of the week. But we got word today that they're making progress. And we had our Teacher of the Year, Principal of the Year banquet recently. And if the public does not know, our Teacher of the Year is Catherine Aligah from, from the Early College High School, and Principal of the Year is Alicia Wispert from the Chaco Wendy Primary School. We're proud of the two of them, and they'll be going on to represent our county and school district at the regional level. And finally, we're continuing to work on our Care Partners Network. And if you own a business or you offer goods and services, and you're willing to offer a discount to Beaufort County Schools employees, we'd love to talk with you and have you be a member of the partner network. Just let me or Mark Don or Lisa know, and we can get you that material and information. And you have the spreadsheet for transfer.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, also, well, I don't know if Michelle has mentioned to you that, that they are having the meeting for the recreation park that, that's gonna be on the twenty-ninth of September at the EdTech Media Center. And it's going to, they're going to let you, let us know where they're gonna start and go. They do have the money to start.
What time is that, Ethan?
Seven to eight, I think it is.
P.U.?
Yes.
Okay, any last words? If not, Mrs.?
I'll make a motion and adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Thank you much, folks.